Call to order, the May 2020-21 business meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Gary, you're up.
Thank you Chair Smith. Our staff support today Christina Twiliger, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Council, roll call on Zoom, Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
In the hearing room, Commissioner Savas.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Schull.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us on the Zoom app for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. With that in mind, I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced during this business meeting. We also have this wonderful brochure out front for the people who are in person and online. It's how to testify before the Board of County Commissioners. Very insightful, helps you know what to say, when to say it, and could possibly relieve any anxiety for people who have trouble talking in public. Gary, can you please introduce the first item?
Yes, thank you Chair Smith. First, we have ice storm updates. Daniel Nibauer, interim Director of Disaster Management, will present. Go ahead, please.
Good morning Chair Smith, Commissioners and Administrator Schmidt. The chipping for the ice storm debris is now complete. We've got about 6,000 cubic yards, and DTD is working on delivering those to county residents that have requested them daily. We're looking probably at about five or six weeks to get rid of the chips and hope that residents keep wanting them so we can be able to get rid of them that way. FEMA application briefings for public assistance are starting today for the county and the cities, and we will also be continuing them tomorrow and two days next week. And so that process will be started, and we'll be working on getting our FEMA reimbursement over a long period of time. And that's pretty much it for the ice storms.
Any questions or comments for other presenter on the wildfire or the ice storm updates? Seeing none, Gary?
All right. Thank you, Daniel. Next, COVID-19 updates. Philip Mason-Joyner, the county's Public Health Director. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Gary. Good morning Chair Smith and Commissioners. Christina, as usual, the slideshow, please. And Daniel will kick us off with updates on the weekly case data.
Okay. Next slide, please. As you can see on the slide, since May 12th, we've had 396 cases, an additional two deaths. Multnomah County has had an additional 655 cases and nine deaths, and Washington County has had an additional 384 cases and one death. Next slide, please. As you can see, we have had a nice drop since the last time we presented this slide in that graph, and so I find that very, very promising. Next slide. For patient counts, we've also seen a drop after that little rise there. In our COVID-positive patients, in terms of ICU beds and ventilators have remained relatively stable. Next slide. As we look at our risk metrics for the hospital bed metrics, we still are above for the daily peak. However, our percent change remains below 15% at 3.4%, so the hospital bed metric has not been met. And next slide, please. For the overall county metrics, we are still high with 251.3 cases per 100,000 population and a test positivity at 8.2%, which would put us in that extreme risk category if it were not for the hospital metrics not being met.
An update on vaccination rates. We have hit the milestone of over 200,000 Clackamas County residents that have been vaccinated to date. At this point, for the state's metrics, which is that once we hit the threshold of 65% of our population age 16 and older receive at least their first dose of the COVID-19 vaccine, then we can submit an equity plan and move the next week into low risk as a community. Around business restrictions, we are at 58.2, but I would note that a lot of activity has happened in the past few days, data entry and reporting lag, so I think this number is actually better than the 58.2. And a lot of activities are happening this weekend to make an impact on this. This number, we have 23,811 folks remaining to reach that 65% threshold, and we have confirmed with the state of Oregon that it will remain 16 and older. It will not, although 12- to 15-year-olds are now eligible, that will not factor into that 65% metric. The state did share that the following counties will, did have their equity plan approved last week, and they will move tomorrow into low risk. That is Benton, Deschutes, Ho River, Lincoln, and Washington Counties. Multnomah County is over that 65% threshold, just barely, and they'll submit their equity plan by tomorrow. So that means if it's approved, they will move into low risk next week, next Friday. Clackamas County, we plan to, staff have worked hard over the last nine days, really impressed with the quality of our equity plan. It's in its final review. We plan to have that ready to submit next Friday. I don't know if we'll meet the 65% threshold by next Friday, but at least the equity plan will be submitted in advance. It does require a letter from myself, Dr. President, and Chair Smith that we will be providing you early next week.
Good.
In the state of Oregon, overall, is at 62.4%. So I asked our data staff to do a little bit of analysis. That's around, rough estimate, about 250,000 more Oregonians that need to get vaccinated for the state to reach that 70%. So will Clackamas County get to 65 before the state gets to 70? I don't know. My crystal ball hasn't been working the past 16 months during COVID-19, but certainly this is an opportunity if we can get to 65% before the state gets to 70. I think that would be a wonderful thing. Our equity plan, we will, you know, I think this is an opportunity to talk about the great work we've been doing in Clackamas County to get vaccines into arms, to address barriers folk have, and all the work we've done with the hospitals and partners and the community nonprofits. We have shared during these meetings with you Board, race and ethnicity data, age data, and this is really thinking about geographic equity, you know, places. And so in public health, several years ago, we created what we called health equity zones. Folks like to see themselves in the data, their local community. So we have a lot of zip codes in the county, but this is really looking at more different communities. They align nicely with our 10 school districts. And what you see, perhaps not a surprise, that the more urban areas have higher vaccination rates compared to our more rural areas.
Can you excuse me? I find this map really fascinating. Why do you think that is? And why do you think our rural areas are much lower in their vaccination rate?
You know, a lot of the mask sites there at the Salem Fairgrounds, it's in Portland, so getting access to those sites is a barrier. We, you know, we do every week have a site in Malala, in Camby. We've regularly been in Estacada. Every week, we're in Sandy on Saturdays, and we've been up in Welch's now a couple times. So we're doing what we can to get out and provide vaccinations. Part of our equity plan, we know that those medium-sized sites at the high schools don't work for everybody. So, you know, having more mobile neighborhood pop-up clinics is something that we're going to be doing in the weeks to come, doing more of that. And then also, we've been reaching out through our business recovery centers and business and community services to work with employers around having vaccination clinics for employees at their work site. And we're going to continue to do more and more of that. That works, going really well, happening behind the scenes, too. Lots of different strategies to try to make an impact here and improve these metrics.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you. Next slide, Christina. So I'll share the next slide. We have lots of local opportunities in Clackamas County. They are, appointments encouraged, walk-ins now supported. Here they all are. We have hundreds of appointments at this town center this Friday, so really want to encourage folks to come on out, hop onto our website, get an appointment, or you can just show up. We'll be also on Saturday. We're in Estacada all day. Westland, Wilsonville, we're there this weekend, all day on Saturday, too. That's completely filled, though, so it's not on the list. Again, Sandy, Malala, and our Oregon City event was so successful, close to 2,000 doses administered at Oregon City last week. So we're coming back again the week following, May 26. Next week, May 27, it's the last week that you can get a first dose at the convention center. So if you want to do that, they're open all day on Sunday. They are doing appointment and walk-up, too. That resource goes away come May 28, it'll be gone. So want to make one final push, that's available. Also, the drive through at the Portland Airport is available, too, for folks. Lots of options. Appointments are available. Pharmacy is also, pretty much all of them, I keep checking, there's appointments available. So really just want to encourage folks, the way we get out of this pandemic, the best tool we've got is to get vaccinated. So really just want to encourage people to do that. And if you have barriers, please call our call center if you need any support, transportation, help with getting scheduled, help with any logistics. It's 503-655-8224. And if you're an employer in the county, you haven't heard from us, you want to do a work site vaccination clinic for your employees, you can call that number, or you can email us at covidvaccine@clackamas.us. And one last slide. We talked about this last week, but the state of Oregon did officially release this week their guidance and more specifics around the updated statewide mask guidance. So this time, outdoors face masks are no longer required for anyone. However, they are encouraging that if you haven't been vaccinated yet and you're in a large card, large crowd, they want to recommend that you do wear your mask to keep you safe. And then for indoors, individual businesses can choose to not allow face coverings for fully vaccinated folks. However, you must, you must, let me think of the term, you have to essentially do a screening to verify vaccination records. So at this time, as County Administrator Schmidt stated last week, we will be continuing to require face coverings for everyone. It's pretty challenging to have to do that, especially for front counter folks as folks come into businesses. And we are hearing from a lot of businesses that they're keeping current practices in place around the county. We have had just a very small uptick in complaints, but not nearly as much as we thought that we would. It sounds like, in general, the vast majority of businesses in Clackamas County are still wearing, requiring face coverings be worn inside. And lots of questions about what does this mean for schools. Schools are still following the Ready, Safe Learners guidance, no changes certainly for this academic year around school requirements for face coverings and the other precautions that are in place. However, the state anticipates in August that they'll release new guidance for what next school year will look like, and really don't have any specifics on that, but I know it's a big point of community interest and concern around that topic.
Thank you, Philip. When you mentioned Clackamas County is requiring face masks, you meant the government buildings.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
And you and I have talked about creative ways to get the vaccination out to our rural areas more, and the mobile pop-ups are certainly that. I think that will work. And you were able to identify your department certain times of the day that would be better for those than not. We've also had, I've had some interest of nurses wanting to volunteer and then their services to give vaccinations, and I'm sure you're working that angle as well. But thank you. Did you say the state metric was currently at 52.4? I can't, I'm not sure if I heard that right.
62.4.
62. Thank you for clarifying that. 62.4 is the state metric. Okay, there we go. And Clackamas County is at 58.2, which I think that was what it was last Friday. And we just haven't been able to count and get more of those in yet.
Yeah, this time last week, we were at 56.
Oh, 56, okay.
Now we're at 58.2, and I think in the coming days, you'll see data entry caught up and some more progress.
Once you get that new data entry, could you send it out to staff, Commissioners, and Administration? We'd appreciate that. Commissioner Schrader.
Oh, no, I have nothing.
Commissioner Savas, beg your pardon.
Yeah, I just want to, the map you had, or the chart you had with the school districts and the map with the areas that are, have low vaccination rates, I just want to say that several weeks ago, I had requested and I received, thank you, a list of the numbers of doses of vaccine that went to fire districts. And I couldn't help but notice that TVFNR, Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue, received substantially 10, at least 10 times more vaccine than any of our fire districts combined. And I don't know how they got that allocation, but, no, they do serve Westland and Wilsonville and Washington County substantially. But it seems to me that, you know, we didn't get, or the fire districts didn't get, I don't know what their distribution or what their priority was, but we need to push it out to the rural, make it available to the rural areas, especially, I think that map's pretty indicative that we have a lot of work to do there. So I'm hoping, whether it's school district cooperation, or locations, or fire district, that we can step up our game there. And we have a lot of retired people that live there, so they're extremely vulnerable. So I think that we need to look at that demographic and make sure we're getting, again, those people that are, that are ready to get the vaccine, to make it available to them and make it, make it easy. I think that's obviously got a lot, a lot to do with it, and I think the, the numbers for Multnomah County and Washington County speak for themselves with access.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you Chair Smith. Philip, I really like seeing that we are doing so many vaccination clinics in schools. I don't know if the other Commissioners saw in our report that we get from Dylan with our Newscom report, there was an article about the concerns in some other areas of the tri-county region that are not doing vaccination clinics in schools, and the real concern about missing that opportunity to vaccinate people where they feel a trust, a trust with their school system. And I just really applaud our efforts there. One thing that I'm also wondering about, there have been some media reports about the dangers of masks with youth during sport activities, and I'm just curious what we know about that, and if there's going, if that's going to spur changes in guidance, and what's, what's really going on there.
Good question.
My understanding is that one of the changes is that outdoor sports now for youth no longer require masks. In terms of the science and concerns about mask-wearing while playing sports, I'll talk to Dr. President, I'll have to come back to you next time with more specifics on that.
Thank you.
I don't have the expertise in my brain at this moment for that.
Great. Commissioner, Commissioner Fisher, do you have any other questions?
No. Amazingly enough, that is all for today. I think a lot of this, gosh, it's been a lot of not knowing what's happening, but I think we have some clarity now about how things are rolling out.
Sure.
As far as transitioning to a post-COVID world.
Right.
And I'm hopeful we can just get more people vaccinated so we can open up more of our businesses.
Commissioner Schrader.
So I have a question. Does your microphone on? No, it's not. Okay. So I have a question related to that, because one of the things I'm hearing and reading about is the expectation of booster shots. Basically, after they look at the genome of the virus, or the, you know, how it's morphing, that both Pfizer and Moderna are going to be working to, kind of what we do with flu shots. So are we prepared to do the same thing with those booster shots that we're doing with the vaccination? I mean, is it going to be like you go to get your flu shot at the pharmacy or your doctor's office? Or are we going to be, do you think we're going to be, or will it be necessary for us to be involved with distribution of boosters?
I anticipate, you know, perhaps long-term, it will be more like flu shots where it's just readily available in the community, and we're not, you know, the county public health is not all hands on deck as directly involved as we are now. I think this year, is, you know, we're hearing, it might be six months, it might be a year. I think the first cycle, just because of limitations on manufacturing and this all being new, I think we will have a heavy role. So a lot of this will continue.
Probably within a year then, if not within six months to a year then, is what you're thinking, is they're going to start saying, well, time to get the boosters, when I'm.
Yes, so monitoring the funding and making sure that we can continue to have the staff to anticipate and plan for that potential need will be important.
Do we, do we know medically how long the immunity lasts then? Or that's an unknown as well?
At this point, Pfizer's the only one I've heard so far that has come out and said they've, they've kind of done all the testing and know that it lasts at least six months, perhaps longer. And I think in the months to come, we'll get more information from.
Hopefully Moderna, too.
Moderna, too, yeah.
Okay. Is that it?
Yep.
Any other questions for any of these two presenters? Gary?
All right. Thank you, Philip and Daniel. Staying on the COVID topic, Commissioners, we have an eighth addendum to Board Order Number 2020-14, declaring a local state of emergency and declaring emergency measures. This is a COVID-19 emergency declaration. Stephen Madcor, County Counsel, will present.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning Commissioners. I'm here with DTD Director Dan Johnson, and we are here presenting to you Addendum Number Eight to the Resolution 2020-14, which was the COVID emergency declaration originally declared on March 2, 2020. This is the eighth addendum, and what this addendum does, it adds an additional emergency measure. We talked to you about this on Tuesday, and this is going to be item number 15, because we have 14 previous emergency measures. And what this one does, it provides for extensions of granted land use permits. And Dan Johnson presented that to you during Tuesday's policy session, and he's here if you have any additional questions on that item. This is really a kind of a courtesy extension to folks who have current land use permits, that if they expire during the pendency of the, they have terms on their permit to be, to be effective dates, and if it expires during the pendency of the emergency, then they have an opportunity to seek an extension. There's a process, there's no fee, and it's something that we're making available to local property owners. Another item that we're weaving into this is rescinding the waiver of late fees for dog licensing. That was something that was presented to the Board under issues, and that was done in March 2020, and the need for that no longer exists. But that waiver was never incorporated into the emergency declaration, so we're rescinding it by way of this declaration here. And also, if the Board has any questions on that, Mr. Johnson will be able to answer those. So that would be it. It doesn't extend the expiration date. That still continues to December 31 at the end of this year. If you want to declare it longer, you certainly can, or if you wanted to rescind it earlier, you could certainly do that as well. But this is the, hopefully one of the final ones we'll have with COVID.
Thank you, Stephen. Does anybody have any questions for County Counsel or Director Dan Johnson? I see none. May I have a motion?
I move we approve the eighth addendum to Board Order Number 2021-09, declaring a local state of emergency and declaring emergency measures.
I believe that's Board Order 2020-14. May I have a second?
An updated script, sorry, apologies Commissioner Schull. The agenda is incorrect.
I stand corrected.
That's right. May I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schull has made the motion, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Christina, would you please call the poll?
Yes. Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Schull?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
And Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you very much to the presenters. The Board will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board for the next items on the agenda. Christina, please bring in Housing Commissioner Ann Leenstra.
She is in?
And, is she on?
Yep.
Great. Gary, what's next?
All right. First Commissioners, is a Housing Authority Board discussion item. That is the Webster Road Redevelopment Project Update, Approval of Resolution 1954, and Closing Document Preparation. Rod or Jill, who's presenting?
Rod Cook.
I don't see Rod. Or Jill, who's online? Rod?
Rod's there.
All right. Rod Cook, interim Director of Health, Housing, and Human Services.
Please introduce yourself.
Rodney Cook, Director, interim Director, Health, Housing, and Human Services. And again, we're here to bring forth this issue that we talked about on Tuesday, about the Webster Road property, and to gain approval from the Board to move forward on that project if we're feeling comfortable to do that.
Any questions for Acting Director Rod Cook? Commissioners, I understand that Mayor Tammy Stample of Gladstone is online and would like to speak on this. As this is her, as this project is in the city of Gladstone, and she is the mayor and elected official, I will allow her this opportunity. Christina, is Mayor Stample online?
She is.
Mayor Stample, you're up.
Hello. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. So first, I want to say thank you for choosing this Webster Road property in Gladstone. We are so excited that you guys are going to take a blighted building and transform it into something that our community needs so desperately. As you know, affordable housing is a huge need, and I'm so thrilled that you are looking at all demographics and putting out this money instead of just looking at a few. I'm afraid that seniors are really falling through the cracks, because they're, the ones that I deal with regularly are really too proud to ask for help. And we need to provide housing for them so bad. Social Security is not a retirement fund. I don't, my big heartburn, as I've said before, is that whatever I can do to help expedite these processes, because there are so many people that need it right now. And I know part of it's our process of planning, it's fund distribution, there's a lot of different layers here, but we need to get the money out there. We need to get these things built for the people that need it right now. That's it. The only other thing I have to say is, we need an emergency shelter in Clackamas County.
Thank you very much.
And I think we're going to have to think outside the box for that one, but that's it. Thank you very much. This is desperately needed, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Stample. What on issue right now is the Webster Road Redevelopment Project. Thank you for coming. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, I did not have a question for Mr. Cook, and I appreciate the mayor coming and speaking with us today, and just want to just echo her concerns with regard to how we can move in the future more expeditiously on these opportunities. We just can't afford to wait three to four years to make something come to fruition. And we've got, we've got to find a way. And I, I'm convinced that really, frankly, the most nimble are going to be the private sector opportunities, whether those are nonprofits, and finding a way to help them do it, because they can do it faster, cheaper, than we can. they can do it faster, cheaper, than we can. And I think in this, in this crisis, we have to look at that and explore that and not just dismiss it. So I'm not saying that we are dismissing it, but I think that that type and those opportunities are something that ought to be focused on and looked at more objectively than we have in the past. Thank you.
Mr. Savis, your comments are taken to heart. They really are. I've had a lot of heartburn over this project. It's something that I inherited. I agree with the mayor that low-income senior housing is very, very needed. However, I've read, I've gone back and studied the historical documents on this from day one, and I was very alarmed about what I uncovered and the process that was used in one of our departments, and I'm not happy with it. This board is going to convene at a later date, and we're going to seriously look on how we build housing in this county. We can do it much better. I think we can do it more efficiently. I'll take into heart Commissioner Savis's words today and other recommendations from our other board members that come to light. So, members of the board, for that reason, I am voting no on this proposal. I fully expect it will pass, but I'm also not signing the accompanying documents. Gary Schmidt said he would that, do that, because I, this project, in my opinion, is a turkey. Any other comments from any other board members? Commissioner Scholl?
My concern about this project is that the, the cost, the cost of this project that is to be used for affordable housing is not affordable. It's, it's just, this project is just run out of control and is too expensive, in my opinion. If we are to build housing to assist those who are in need of help, we need to come up with a plan to build that housing at a, at a price that the taxpayers can stomach, and this project is beyond that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Chair, actually, I think I will make one more comment, and I'm happy to make the motion as well as soon as I can find that part of the script, but I do want to say that, or remind people, anyone that's watching or listening, that this particular facility is housing for seniors. And I was reminded here this week of a comment that was made in 2016, back when Chair Ludlow was the chair, and Commissioner Smith was here, Commissioner Schrader was here, and Commissioner Bernard. And we were at a town, not a town hall, but we were at a meeting at Riverside School following the big explosion, if you want to call it that, of the homelessness crisis that hit the Oak Grove area back in 2016. And one of the gentlemen in the room stood up and said, you know, I'm not going to make it, and I'm going to, I'm going to be shopping for a tent here pretty soon. And a few weeks later, after that gentleman made that comment, another gentleman that I knew personally, I didn't know this other gentleman about, but another gentleman I know called me up and said that his rent had gone up so significantly that he was going to be forced out of his rental unit, economically forced out of his unit, and he would, he had to find something. And he called me up a few weeks after that and said that he found a place, because he lived in Portland in his nephew's basement. So we have a lot of factors that are contributing to the increase in housing, and people are being economically displaced, and displacement is a big issue, and I, and again, we won't, I won't belabor the fact of, I won't belabor the issue of what's contributing to that, but I do want to say this is, this is senior housing. Seniors are impacted. I don't think anyone ever, ever prepared or thought that taxes or rents or anything at this stage of life would be such an economic burden, and people actually couldn't, couldn't make it through this. So with that, I, I am going to support this today, and I do want to share my, I won't say my reluctance, it's not reluctance, but my, my comments and concerns about the projects we have endeavored in that have been so expensive and taken so long. And again, I won't belabor that, but I will be supporting that. I'll be biting my tongue, but I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Would you like to make the motion, Commissioner Savis?
Sure, yes, I will.
It's written there.
So I move to approve Webster Road Development Project Update, Approval of Resolution 1954, and Closing Preparation.
I'll second. Commissioner Savis has made the motion, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Christina, would you call the poll?
Yes. Commissioner Leenstra?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
No.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
No. Motion passes 4-2. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Gary, what's up next?
Next is Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Christina, will you please read the consent agenda by title only?
Yes. Number one, we have requesting approval to apply and accept for grant funding if awarded the Meyer Memorial Trust to ensure diversity, equity, and inclusion training for public housing authority leaders. Maximum grant award of $172,000. No general funds are involved. Number two, requesting approval to apply for a public housing safety and security, crime and safety grant. Maximum grant award is $250,000 and is granted from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No general funds are involved. And number three, approval of Amendment Number One to an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing Authority of Clackamas County and Social Services for a full-time case manager for the Housing Authority program participants. Amendment will add $105,000 for a contract total of $275,000 with funding through Health, Housing, and Human Services General County Funds. And that's your consent agenda.
Does any Commissioner wish to remove any items? May I have a motion?
I move for approval of the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Leenstra has moved for approval, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded. Any further discussion? Christina, please call the poll.
Okay. Commissioner Leenstra?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. The board will now adjourn as, thank you, Ann Leenstra, for appearing today. We appreciate your time and commitment to these matters. The board will now.
Thank you.
You bet. The board will now adjourn as a housing authority and reconvene as a Board of Clackamas County Commissioners for the next item on the agenda. Gary, please introduce the next item.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Next are public hearings. The first public hearing is a resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. The effect is an increase in appropriations of $8,55,479. Sandra Montoya, the county's budget manager, will present. Go ahead, please.
Please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioner, Sandra Montoya, Budget Manager for the county.
Good morning. Before you today, we have.
Is that microphone on? It's always on, right?
It should always be on, but it sounds like it's off.
You're going to get some help, just a moment. There you go. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Let me get back to my script here. So for your consideration this morning is a supplemental budget request totaling $8 million made up of changes in 11 funds. To summarize the larger changes, Item One and Item 10 relate to the move of the courthouse project from the General Fund to the Capital Projects Fund and creates the necessary authority of 1.3 million. Item Three recognizes additional revenue of 1.5 million in the Social Services Fund for a housing program and creates and aligns the necessary authority. Item Six, for public health, recognizes additional revenue of 4.4 million from the state of Oregon for COVID-19 response activities and increases the needed spending authority. Items Seven and Eight are adjustments of $729,000 for the closing of the Tourism Fund into the Transient Room Tax Fund, and it adjusts the budget authority in the transient room tax. The resolution provides authority to make the necessary transfers to close out the Tourism Fund in the current fiscal year. The remaining recommended budget adjustments are needed to make, to meet operational projections and remain in compliance with budget law, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Any questions for Sandra Montoya on this supplemental budget increase? Seeing none, I will now open a public hearing. I will take in-person testimony first. Do we have anybody in the room who would like to testify on the additional appropriation in the budget? I see none. Christina, do we have anybody online?
No, I have nobody registered for this public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval.
I move approval for resolution for the Clackamas County Supplemental Budget for Fiscal Year 2020-2021. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schrader has moved, and Commissioner Savis has seconded the motion. Any further comments on this item? Seeing none. Christina, would you please call the poll?
Yes. Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Gary, can you please introduce the next item?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Sandra, very much. Next public hearing is a resolution for exemption and authorization to use a competitive proposal process to obtain a P3 project company for the courthouse replacement project. Gary Barth, the courthouse project manager and county administration, will present. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy to be here before you this morning, courthouse project manager Gary Barth. We met on May 5th on a study session, policy session, where you approved moving forward with the public-private partnership to design, build, finance, operate, and maintain the new county courthouse. The next step in that procurement process is adoption of a resolution today authorizing the use of the P3 procurement effort. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Ryan Rice, interim procurement manager for the county. Ryan, Andrew Naylor from county council, Nate Boderman, county council, have all worked on the findings and the resolution being presented to you this morning. So I'll turn it over to the expert.
Thanks, Gary. Thank you. Gary, Chair, and fellow Commissioners, thank you so much for having us. My name is Ryan Rice, as Gary introduced me, and we're here following up on our board approval for the P3 delivery method from a few weeks ago, and we are seeking a resolution to an exemption for our current procurement methods. This alternative selection method is going to consist of a two-part approach. It's going to be first conducted with a request for qualifications and then the subsequent issuance of a request for proposal. Our local contracting rules, along with Oregon statute, empowers the board to grant an exemption to the standard bidding process, and this exemption is going to be needed in order to move forward with the P3 delivery process. So historically, public improvement projects utilize a standard bidding process. So in short, this, this is a published set of bid schedules, engineered specifications, drawings, and any other documentation that would go along with the final bid of construction. The selected contractor for this method is determined by low price. That's the only driver in that scenario. Conversely, a request for proposal is where we select a firm based on subjective factors, experience, approach, project team, design, price, they all factor into our final decision. This alternative RFP process should be used for projects that are complex or have special conditions similar to our courthouse P3 project. And due to the complexity of design, financing, and construction of the courthouse, we'll be taking the RFP process one step further by making this an actual two-phase approach. Our RFQ will generate a shortlist of qualified candidates and then issue an RFP only to that shortlisted set of firms. Through the RFQ process, we're going to select a shortlist of up to three firms that demonstrate the highest qualifications for this project. The selection will be conducted by an evaluation committee, who will be scoring according to a published set of criteria within that RFQ. The outcome of the shortlist will allow us to issue an RFP to the strongest field of proposers, and then the selection will be, will be based on a variety of selective, subjective factors, and we'll contract with a single project company to design, build, finance, operate, and maintain the proposed courthouse here. So in order for our board to authorize this alternative process, it has to approve two major findings. The first one is this will, this will, this exemption is unlikely to encourage any sort of favoritism in the awarding of a contract. And second, awarding a contract under this exemption is likely to result in some sort of cost savings to the county and/or substantial benefits to the county, including optimal risk factor transfer and innovative and efficient building design. For our first findings regarding competition, the use of a two-phase approach, the RFQ/RFP process is going to ensure maximum competition. This contracting opportunity is going to be broadly published and have a wide reach by both being published within our Oregon Procurement Information Network, that's the state-run public procurement site, along with a print version, which would go to the Business Tribune. In addition, Gary and our project manager and our procurement team, they've identified a number of firms that have expressed interest in this already and are anxious to propose. Secondly, in regards to cost savings or some sort of substantial benefit to the county, the proposed findings go into great detail here, but it's important to note a few of them on a high level. The benefits of using an RFQ/RFP process to select a P3 project delivery method include the following: fostering innovation, mitigating risk to the county, improving design quality, improving cost control, and optimizing construction schedules. Having a firm onboard during the design helps identify efficiencies, it's going to evaluate alternative options if needed, provide creative value engineering, provide real-time market pricing, which is incredibly important in this day and age right now, streamline design construction, mitigate schedule changes and impacts, and identify the most cost-effective methods of sequencing. This also avoids numerous change orders that are possible when you do a low bid. The RFQ/RFP process allows the county to factor expertise and experience into the contractor selection process. This is not normally done with a bid. The RFQ/RFP process, the county has the ability to set an affordability ceiling and to create a competitive environment that will drive innovation and efficiencies. This is likely will result in a project that represents a better comparative value overall. The pricing will facilitate a more accurate assessment of design options and maximize opportunities for innovation. The overall project price is established at the outset, and this is very, when with very limited exceptions to that. The risk associated with such things as material and labor inflation, that's all transferred to the selected firm in this scenario. The P3 method enables the county to effectively leverage private sector innovation and know-how and the benefits of competitive, competition to deliver the project on time, on budget, and with cost certainty for the next 30 years, as a P3 would enable. So as a final summation of the benefits of selecting a project firm through a competitive RFQ/RFP process, this will allow the county to select contractors based upon other factors rather than price, which just would not be appropriate here. It will allow, it will allow the selection of a firm whose proven experience and proposed solutions matches the nature of the required work in both design and construction phases. Are there questions for myself regarding the process or the project as a whole for Gary?
Commissioners, questions or comments for both presenters?
So Chair Smith, I can't find my right hand button, I'm so sorry, but if you could indulge me, I do have a question.
Please go ahead, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Smith. I am interested in knowing, we've had some presentations prior to this board about certain terms within an RFP that promote public goals, such as workforce development, apprenticeship, contractors that use, you know, possibly more women, or that there's a process for gaining new skills. I'm just curious how that is being factored into this RFP, or if now is not the time to do that.
Great question.
This is Gary, Gary Barth, speaking, project manager. Right now, we're, the board last year adopted the C2/P2 framework, which is to advance internships and skilled training opportunities for the underserved and undertrained community in partnership with workforce Clackamas. So we will definitely, I can feel with the county administrator. So we will definitely, with the county administrator, and similar to DTD and West, we will be incorporating C2/P2 framework philosophies to the courthouse project. We also intend to engage with the Office of Diversity and Inclusion to look at some factors we might want to include in the procurement. And then we've already talked to a number of interested proposing teams who have all experienced and expressed in presenting opportunities for local labor and internship programs in their proposals. So we'll firm that up more as we move forward, but it's definitely top of mind for achieving the board's goals.
That's excellent. Gary, about how many firms have shown interest in this project?
I've had conversations with at least eight.
Eight?
Yeah. We expect six to eight will probably request the RFQ, respond to the RFQ.
Well, I would say with six to eight firms, that creates quite a bit of competition. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, thanks, Gary. Great presentation, and after so many years, to finally see this project moving forward is pretty remarkable. And it's just, you know, finalizing a plan that we have had on the books for many years. I just wanted to make a comment about C2/P2 and remind folks that that is supported by our Workforce Board. Bridgette Daisy is the executive director, and they are well aware of it. They are specialists in workforce. I have the privilege of being the liaison to that group, and I want to make sure that you're aware that they are specialists in this area. And so as you move forward with this equity and inclusion and having more, you know, all those goals that C2/P2 wants to work, that we also work closely with our Workforce Board as a resource.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, I just want to just clarify what I heard. So I'm hearing that we have maybe up to eight folks that are interested in bidding, but we're going to select up to three?
No, well, a correction on that. We will shortlist up to three out of that eight, and those three will receive the actual request for proposal package, and then those three will be competing.
So is there something that compels us to limit it to three?
The RFP process is very extensive and very competitive, and each of the teams, and these aren't just one firm, these are teams of firms that form.
What firms, Gary?
They're not just one firm, it's a team of firms that will form. So we've got six to eight teams of multiple firms forming to compete. And they will put in extensive effort. They will spend seven figures to compete for this project.
Wow.
So you want to limit the number of firms that will put forth that kind of effort because you're only going to pick one winner. And it's customary that we pay some level of design fees to the unsuccessful proposers, and we want to limit that exposure as well.
Well, so I'm going to follow on that. So I'm, I'm going to say something first, and again, out of respect to my colleagues, so please don't take this any other way, but I just want to just on record that on May 5th, when this came up before the board, that my comments, my questions were interrupted, and I was not allowed to finish, and I need to get all my questions answered, and I'm a little bit upset about that even today. So with that said, I'm going to just say that my point I always try to make on May 5th, and I'll make it here again today, is that I do not have a problem with P3s. I am pleased that all of my colleagues are supportive of the courthouse. I am supportive of the courthouse project. But I must say that the point I tried to make on May 5th, and I'll make it here again today, is that we put a high premium, I feel an inflated premium, on risk. So it puzzles me that we would put such a high premium on risk, that we would limit, for some reason, the cost of including more competition because of that cost? That's miniscule compared to the $100 million in risk, or $104 million in risk proposed. And as the consultant responded on the meeting that day, the payments under that model were $100 million more. So why would we limit competition? That just, it doesn't make any sense.
Before either one of you answer, Commissioner Savis, you said your questions were not answered. Have you submitted them in writing to either county council Gary Barth or our procurement officer so you could get the answers?
Chair, the decision was made on May 5th.
Well, you are complaining today that you have not received those answers. I suggest those questions will still be relevant as long as this project is going on. I suggest you go ahead and put your questions in writing to the experts and the authority in the room so you can be satisfied or not satisfied going forward. Would either one of you care to answer Commissioner Savis's concern?
I'll be happy to respond. This is our first P3 as the county. We hired consultants in legal, technical, financial, and transactional experience. I've attended two P3 summits with the industry to learn best practices, and we're following the counsel of our hired consultants in the RFQ/RFP process. We're following the exact same process that Howard County, Maryland, and Miami-Dade, Florida used in their process with a request for qualifications, a shortlisting to a top three, and then an extensive competitive process with those three firms. And that's industry practice, best practice, and it was recommended by our consultants that that's the approach we should use.
Yeah, and if you get any questions along this project from any of the Commissioners, just feel free to answer those, and then send them back to all Commissioners, if you would, please, Gary. Paul, you have another comment?
Yeah, so I just want to just get to the point of the matter for today, is that why would we limit it to three?
I don't think it's being limited to three. I think anybody has an opportunity to...
That's exactly what staff said, is that they were going to limit it to three.
Well, no, it's not being limited. I think it's a two-tier bidding process, if I understand it right, Gary.
It is a two-tier process. All firms that are interested in the project submit their qualifications, and we do an extensive review. We'll have an evaluation committee, we'll score those, and we'll pick the top three that we want to move forward with. And the reason is, is because you'd be hard-pressed to get more than three, to invest that kind of energy and resources. They've only got a 33% chance of winning the project if it's three. If you expand to four, it's a 25% chance of winning. Five, 20%, you know, so you'd be hard-pressed to find firms willing to invest the money necessary to win an RFP if the competition is too extensive beyond that shortlisting, that pre-qualification effort.
I have a question for our procurement officer. I'm not sure how long you've been at the county, but it occurs to me there was a very lucrative contract given in the ambulance contract not long ago, and maybe an extension was made. How many ambulance companies applied for the ambulance contract?
Oh, boy, I do not know. I'd have to go check.
Gary Smith?
There were at least two, two or three. I don't remember exactly.
And that is all? And we didn't seek others to go out and bid on that?
Do you remember, Stephen? I don't remember.
Well, you'll recall, Chair, I think you were here for that originally. We had two candidates, AMR and Metro West, and Metro West was even late with their submittal. You wanted, we contemplated reopening it.
So I think, thank you for that. We had two, and then one was late. And so what I'm saying is, we only had two interested. And on this project, we could have up to eight interested. So I don't think this is out of line for what the business of the county has conducted and past practices, is my point. Any further qualifying questions or statements? I'll entertain a motion.
You'll want to open the public hearing, Chair.
I'm going to open a public hearing. Thank you, Stephen Magcor. Is there anybody in the room, in person, who wishes to testify on the courthouse P3 model? Seeing none, Christina, is there anybody online?
I have nobody online registered.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing on this, and I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Fisher?
Oh, thank you, Chair Smith. I just had a question. I've, oh, I just got an answer. I was texting Elizabeth Comfort, our finance person, because I think that the questions that Paul raised are very important, and I would like to see if it's possible for us to get a real number that we will, we can put on the record, because I keep hearing Commissioner Savis say that there's $100 million cost, but within that, Elizabeth Comfort just confirmed by text message that that's not the correct number that we are spending to transfer the risk. Within that are maintenance and operation costs, and also there's a pretty critical time value of money when you look at long projects over extended period of time. So I'm putting that inquiry in just to our finance folks, because I want to know. To me, transferring risk is a huge value to that, and we see that with our housing projects. We see it with other construction projects that we've done within the county where costs kind of explode and they get to be much more expensive than we intend. So there's incredible value to the taxpayer and the public to that. But with that, Chair Smith, I will make the motion, and I suggest that we approve, and I don't know if I have to say the exact what this is, but I have it...
I think you might have language someplace. I will wait for you to find the language.
Okay, I don't know if I'm going to easily be able to find it, but I vote that we approve the RFQ process for the courthouse. Hopefully, that will be adequate.
Stephen?
Would you like me to read the motion?
Would you please?
Commissioner Fisher, you move for approval of the resolution for exemption and authorization to use a competitive proposal process to obtain a P3 project company for the courthouse replacement project.
Do I hear a second?
I will second.
Commissioner Fisher has moved for approval of the P3 courthouse project, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Commissioner Savis, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to just correct something. I think, again, not that it's going to change anything, but I just think that anyone listening ought to be completely aware of this discussion here today, and again, a misstatement that was made. I'll hold this up again, like I did on May 5th. This is the document. Operations and maintenance are separate. They're $3 to $6 million over the life of this. $3 to $6 million for the O&amp;M and maintenance, separate from the risk. Okay? If you add those numbers up together, the $100 million, $104 million of risk premium under this model, again, that's an estimate, has nothing to do with the maintenance. The maintenance is separated on this chart.
Gary Barth, do you wish to make a comment on that?
I'll defer to Elizabeth Comfort to provide the official reply to the board to Commissioner Fisher's question.
Is Elizabeth Comfort on board, online? She's not. We're going to go ahead and vote on this. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Christina, please call the poll.
Okay, let's see. Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
No.
And Chair Smith?
Aye, motion passes 4-1. Gary, can you introduce the next item, please?
Yes, Chair Smith. Next is the consent agenda, and I'll ask Christina to read the consent agenda by title only.
All right, so we'll start with Health, Housing, and Human Services. It's approval to apply to funding opportunity OHA 5180-21 with the Oregon Health Authority for increasing community access to care utilizing Measure 110 funds. Estimated total to be no more, to be more than $150,000 with funding through the Oregon Health Authority. No general funds are involved. Number two, approval of amendment number two to the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Health and Sciences University for the Oregon Care Coordination Program. This amendment would add $89,977, with a contract maximum value of $234,164, funding through the grants from Oregon Health and Sciences University. No general funds are involved. Number three, approval of amendment number five to the intergovernmental subversipitant agreement with the City of Wilsonville, Wilsonville Community Center to provide the social services for Clackamas County residents. This amendment adds $29,483 for maximum agreement of $125,389, and is funded through the Older American Act and Rite Connection Pass through funds. No general funds are involved. Number four, approval of intergovernmental agreement number 166036 with the State of Oregon acting by and through the Oregon Health Authority for the operation and financing of community mental health, addiction treatment, recovery and prevention services, and problem gambling programs. Revenue contract maximum value of $8,324,692.18, with funding through the State of Oregon and Oregon Health Authority. No general funds are involved. Number five, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with amendment number two with Clackamas County Circuit Court to provide protective order and support services. This amendment will add $73,277 for a maximum value of $225,439, with funding through the U.S. Department of Justice. No general funds are involved, and no matches required. Number six, approval for revenue intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Human Services, Office of Vocational and Rehabilitation Services for job placement and job retention services. This is a revenue agreement with a maximum value of $300,000. No general funds are involved. For the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental grant agreement number 34284 with the State of Oregon acting by and through its Department of Transportation, Commerce, and Compliance Division for Clackamas County Motor Carrier Personnel to perform commercial vehicle inspections at state weigh-in stations. No financial impact, it's an agreement only. Number two, approval of a board order to permit a gate-access hoe-filled drive, a local access road. Application and processing fee have been received. Number three, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Oregon City to transfer permitting authority and maintenance responsibility for a portion of Maple Lane Court and Maple Lane Road to the City of Oregon City. This is a one-time payment of $29,384, with funding through the Community Road Fund. No general funds are involved. Number four, approval of a board order vacating a portion of Victory Road. Permanent vacation of a portion of Victory Road right-of-way, no financial impact, is involved. Number five, approval of a resolution declaring the public necessity and purpose for acquisition of rights of way easements and fee property for the contract paving Webster Area Package Project with and authorizing good-faith negotiations and condemnation actions. Right-of-way budget is $32,209, with a total project cost of $1,048,440, funding through the Community Road Fund and County Road Fund. No general funds are involved. Number six, acceptance of an access easement and maintenance covenant for a storm system located at 13601 Southeast 178th Avenue. Establishment of an access easement and maintenance covenant, no financial impact. Under elected officials, approval of a previous business meeting minutes. Number two, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County on behalf of the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and the State of Oregon acting by and through the Oregon State Police for use of the Public Safety Training Center complex. This is a revenue agreement for $10,000 annually. Under Business and Community Services, approval of an intergovernmental grant agreement number 34284 with the State of Oregon acting by and through its Department of Transportation, Commerce, and Compliance Division of Clackamas County Motor Carrier Personnel to perform commercial vehicle inspections at the state weigh-in stations. No financial impact, agreement only.
I think these might actually be messed up.
Yes.
Online. Let me grab my actual agenda so I can read from here.
That's fine, Christina.
I think online might have been a little messed up.
That's all right.
Okay, so for Business and Community Services, it is not what it states online, but I will read it from here. Let's see, it's approval of State of Oregon Department of Administrative Services Grant Agreement Amendment Number One with Clackamas County to provide additional funding for grants to local small business community impacted by COVID-19 pandemic. This amendment will add $2,700,986.76 in relief fund dollars, making the total agreement value $6,869,522.76, funded through the State of Oregon. No general funds are involved. The Technology Service... The technology services items have been removed. Under County Administration, approval of a professional services contract for research justice study for communities of color in Clackamas County with the Coalition for Communities of Color. Total contract not to exceed $300,000, with funding through the general funds and contributions from local government and businesses. Under the Finance Department, approval of Amendment Number Three with Contract, Two Contract, Two Three Six Nine, with Earthworks Landscape Service Incorporated for the grounds, maintenance and repair services. This amendment will add $378,893.63, with a total contract of $2,931,667.34. This is funded through the Facilities Maintenance Program. And last but not least, approval of a public improvement contract with Johnson Controls Incorporated for the Brooks Building Rooftop Unit Replacement, the total contract of $302,72, with funding through the Capitol, County Capitol Projects Fund. And that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Christina. That was quite long, and you did it well. Yes, I'm glad it wasn't me. Does any commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
May I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schrader has moved approval for the consent agenda, and Commissioner Fisher has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Christina, would you please call the poll?
Yes, Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. The board will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Development Agency for the next agenda item. Gary, what's up next?
Next is the Development Agency Consent Agenda. Christina, would you please read the consent agenda by title only?
Yes, there's just one item. It's approval of a resolution for Clackamas County Development Agency Supplemental Budget, less than 10% and budget reduction for fiscal year 2020-2021. The effect is an increase in appropriations of $337,507, with funding through the urban renewal tax increment financing. That's your consent agenda.
Thank you. Does any commissioner wish to remove this item? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
I move for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion items? Christina, please call the poll.
All right, Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. The motion has passed 5-0. The board will now adjourn as the Development Agency and convene as the Board of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for the next consent agenda. Gary, what's up?
Chair Smith, next is the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda. Christina, would you please read the consent agenda by title only?
Yes, it's Amendment Number Five to the Interagency Agreement, excuse me, between the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Health, Housing and Human Services Social Services Division. This amendment increases the contract value by $44,653, with a maximum contract value of $446,020. This is funded through the Older American Act, and no general funds are involved.
Does any commissioner have comments on this item? Does any commissioner wish to remove any item? May I have a motion?
I move for approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval. Commissioner Savas has seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Christina, can you please call the poll?
Yes, Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. The board will adjourn as a North Clackamas Parks and Rec District and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. Up next is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of worth consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public comment at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first, and I do have one card. Again, I will state we have a nice little brochure, public testimony before our board, and I have a gentleman in the room, and I hope I'm pronouncing your name right. His name is Stan Catheman. Would you please come up to the dais and state your name and your area of residence, please? And you have three minutes.
Thank you, county commissioners. My name is Stan Catheman. I live in Damascus, Oregon. I am wanting to address you today just concerning what I would call vote nullification. See, last fall, I cast my vote. I cast my vote in favor of Commissioner Scholl. And what I've seen and heard go on in this room and in this, with this commission, is an all-out attack upon the person that I voted for. I know who he is. I know what he believes, and I believe that his First Amendment right gives him the ability to believe and say what he wants. And I stand up for that right. And I ask that this witch hunt that is asking for his resignation, that is censuring him, needs to end. It's wrong. It's wrong. He has rights. Who are the rest of you to decide that he does not? I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Catheman, for coming forward. I see a green light on. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I just want to just clarify, just maybe ask Mr. Catheman?
Catheman, that's correct.
Thank you for coming today. I just want to make sure, are you the impression that we are actively asking for Mr. Scholl's resignation today, or in the recent past?
In the, what do you call recent?
Last few weeks, months?
In the last few months? Was there not a call for his resignation?
In January, there was initially.
And has there not been a continued attack upon him?
I believe there has been.
Not by this board, that I'm aware of. I might, you know, I can speak for myself, you know, I'll just say that.
Sure.
So, you know, I just wanted to just make sure, whatever information you have, it seemed to be that you were under the assumption that we were continually calling for his resignation on a regular basis. I just want to clarify, that's not the case that I'm aware of.
I believe, if I may indulge our guest here today-
Thank you.
I believe you're referring to the outside calls that have come in to us either through public testimony in person or on the phone?
There is some of that. I will make a further reference, if you may, if I may. How about emails by the county administrator seeking those whom felt harmed by Mr. Scholl? Felt harmed or, it just, it seemed outrageous to me. There's, everybody has the same rights. There's no, everybody has the right, if somebody feels harmed, they have the right to stand up and speak for themselves. I don't think it's the county administrator's position to go and seek somebody's, feel, you know, make sure that they feel okay about it. If Mr. Scholl has offended someone, then let that someone deal with it. So I assume that your county administrator is part of this commission?
No, he is not an elected member. He is hired by the Board of County Commission-
And that's my point.
And he is, he is a county employee.
Correct, but he is hired and under the supervision of this commission.
Well, thank you, Mr. Catheman. I appreciate your comments today.
Thank you.
You bet. Do I see any more people in the room to testify?
Chair, just for, there's some confusion. Mr. Catheman, I'd love to chat with you afterwards, or-
Can we take this, I think we need to take this away.
I understand, but I think we need to help Mr. Schmidt out over here. I'm not sure that the comments made directed toward him are something he's actually truly involved with, so I think he's got a responsibility. I think maybe those are, it's been blurred here. So there's a misunderstanding, is what I'm saying. And so I just want to come in defense of Mr. Schmidt.
That is fine. That is fine, but I'm going to remind the board that in the past, I have limited these exchanges between public members who come before us as we are not prepared, we do not have a heads-up. I see one commissioner wants to speak on this, but I'm going to limit this exchange publicly. We can take it out in the hall afterwards. Yes, Commissioner Schrader, you will get to speak, but I'm laying down the ground rules for this particular conversation. Commissioner Schrader, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say that if you're upset, you should be upset with us. You know, our job as commissioners is the buck stops with us. So respectfully, I would just say, it's not a good idea to attack people that work with us, to help us do their jobs, but if you, but we are the ones elected to take the tomatoes. It's our job. And so when you're upset with us, or upset with things that happen, just in general for the public, I would say, we're the ones that chose to be elected, and we're the ones that deserve to get the tomatoes thrown at us from any whatever, because unfortunately or fortunately, that's part of our job, and it's also part of being accountable. Now, I have to say too, that as an elected official, my job is to work with my colleagues who are duly elected by the constituents of this county. I respect each and every one of them. And sometimes I get in trouble because there are people that want me to behave differently, but I will not. I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again, I respect Commissioner Savas, I respect Commissioner Scholl, I respect Chair Smith, I respect Commissioner Fisher, and it's our job to put aside all these external things that interfere with how we do our jobs for your good as a citizen. So I think we just got to make that clear. And yeah, come in and tell us how upset you are, that's fine. Like I said, that's part of our job. We have to, we have to learn how to deal with it. We have to learn how to take the slings and arrows of this job. So thanks for coming today, and I do respect every single one of you, so.
Thank you, commissioners, for this. If any further discussion, I suggest we take it apart from the business meeting, and I'm sure you will have a commissioner or two who would like to speak to you. Mr. Catheman, I thank you for coming for today.
Thank you for your time.
Seeing no other people in the room, Christina, we're going to open up online, and I believe we're going to allow Tammy Stevens to come onboard first, and she's going to be allowed five minutes because she is ahead, the president of the Beaver Creek CPO, is that correct?
The Hamlet.
I mean, the Hamlet, I beg your pardon. Beg your pardon, Tammy. Tammy Stevens, please continue.
Wonderful. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chair Smith, very, very much. Good morning, commissioners. Tammy Stevens, Chair of the Hamlet of Beaver Creek here with our quarterly community communications. Thank you very much for providing us five minutes to give our report and answer any questions. Our topic for May is transportation. Seldom does a week go by that our Hamlet Board does not receive concerns about congestion, especially since the wildfire evacuation turned Beaver Creek Road into a large frightening parking lot. We are all very eager to participate in an emergency plan and understand Hamlets will begin participating by giving input at the next leaders' meeting on June 9th. With our expanded boundary to include the former KARA CPO, Highway 213 carries traffic to and from Malino, Colton, Malala, Monitor, Mount Angel, Markham, Scotts Mills, and Silverton through the Hamlet of Beaver Creek. The intersection of Highway 213 and Beaver Creek Road is both congested and unsafe, and results in congestion of all arterial roads feeding into the state highway. Ultimately, a grade separation is needed, but comes with quite a price tag. The Hamlet is interested in working with the county, ODOT, and federal government to plan and secure funding to upgrade this intersection. There is a lot of development happening and planned south of Oregon City. From the 180 residents, with 33 of them including commercial services across from the high school, and the growth of Clackamas Community College, to the 171 multifamily units off Maple Lane and development in general, traffic congestion is going to get much, much worse. The Oregon City School Board hasn't helped by placing the bus barns so it feeds buses onto Highway 213 and Beaver Creek Road on the south side of the city, but the county has no say in that. Also, the 20 mile per hour zone by the high school slowing 16,000 vehicles every school day, again, the county has no say. What the county does have is the ability to limit access to the county-owned Beaver Creek Road. The sewer work is destroying the road the county citizens paid to have resurfaced just a few years ago. If Oregon City owned Beaver Creek Road to the city limits, they could do what they want with impunity, and Oregon City taxpayers could vote the bill. The county and its citizens are in effect subsidizing the lack of Oregon City planning and sprawl. For the nearly 10,000 Beaver Creek residents, we ultimately live in the world's largest cul-de-sac. It seems simple to most citizens, either stop development or plan and finance services. Lately, the folks in the Hamlet feel there is no plan, no money, no communications, and really no concern. The Hamlet is asking to work with the county, ODOT, and Oregon City to better communicate the transportation plan for this area, assuring maintained, safe, and accessible roads. Thank you all for your time and support.
Tammy, I really appreciate that your Hamlet is so in tune to emergency preparedness. I would like to include you and any other of your members as we move forward in developing plans and implementing them. I had a great discussion with Daniel Ebbauer in my office, he's our new emergency management director, and we have talked about the transportation routes and how to more quickly evacuate people. And you make some interesting points about the speed limit at the school during the evacuation, but school speed limits usually happen during school hours, but that certainly is something that can be looked at. We're also working on communication systems, and the state has stepped up some money for that. And I'm really excited about the willingness of a lot of people in the area wanting to do good work on this, and so I'm going to include you on that. And thank you for your willingness to testify today and bring these items to our attention. Commissioner Savas has a comment to make.
Yeah, I just want, just want, number one, you know, thank you, Tammy, for your comments, and yeah, the, our capacity issues for transportation are stressed out to the maximum, especially in our rural areas, and it's a shocking day when our rural roads have a mile or two sometimes of traffic congestion, and these are farm roads with no sidewalks, no pedestrian facilities, no bike facilities, very narrow shoulders. It's just a stat of state affairs. I think the road out to Damascus is one example, but we've got these, we've got a situation where our growth is impacting, and our transportation dollars that are available to remedy these things are not adequate to meet the demand. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. We are fighting for dollars as best we can, but we are the, we're the smaller of the three counties and don't have the political horsepower that our neighbors do.
Thank you. Thank you, Tammy. Christina, who's up next?
All right, the next up is going to be Michael Weber. Michael, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Christine. Michael Weber, Jennings Lodge. Commissioner Scholl, in a recent email to me, you stated that you would do what you could to promote factual accuracy in public discourse. Chris and I endeavor to be as accurate and truthful as possible, although sometimes the truth hurts. Over the past few months, Chris has spent a great deal of time documenting your actual words and deeds. She has substantiated her claims with evidence and does not engage in unfounded accusations. In the one instance where it was pointed out to her that she overstated donations to your campaign from Timber Unity, she quickly reviewed the original information and corrected the record. To this day, she welcomes feedback to show where anything she documents or says is inaccurate. Yes, the truth can hurt, but sometimes it is the only way we could be made aware of how our words and actions hurt others. We and others have pointed out where your words and actions have hurt the homeless, where it was harmful to those most affected by social injustice, where the example you have provided has hindered rather than helped us beat back COVID and finally return to normalcy. And when your current description of past events differs significantly from the public record, we will be here to remind you of what actually happened. It would seem that some in your orbit are having a problem coming up with an accurate label for us. I prefer actively engaged citizen. You and I both believe we're fighting for the public good. It's just that our definition of public good might differ from yours. I believe providing the elderly affordable housing is a worthwhile investment. I believe in safely reopening our schools. I believe in protecting the frontline workers as well as helping the business owners. I believe in listening to public health officials from the H3S to the state of Oregon to the federal government and following all their guidance in fighting this pandemic. I do not consider fighting for these ideals a waste of our time nor our talent. Speaking of time, Chris and I are volunteering at a vaccine clinic this weekend. Commissioner Scholl, I call upon you to actively accept and promote all the county's H3S recommendations regarding COVID and stop working at cross purposes with your public words and actions and on social media. For example, promoting anti-mask rallies in Oregon City on your Facebook page is not helpful. Actively promoting vaccinations and correcting anti-vax misinformation to your base is. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We'll go ahead and move on to the next. That's going to be Chris Waller. Chris, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Chris Waller, Jennings Lodge. Commissioner Scholl, you told my husband that you would do what you could to promote factual accuracy in public discourse. I have some opportunities for you to do this during Commissioner comments today. At last Thursday's meeting, Sarah Zager testified and repeated a quote from you. The Muslim community believes that the Quran and its provisions for Sharia law is the only way that good government can be achieved. I believe in controlled immigration and controlled borders. The Muslim leadership believes that national borders are wrong and that open borders should be implemented. During Commissioner commentary, you stated to Sarah, you attributed a quote to me that actually came from one of the leaders of the Muslim Education Center. That is available on Zoom recording from 18 January. Commissioner Scholl, this is not true. I listened again to the entire 90-minute talk from the Muslim Educational Trust from January 18th, which despite your claim is not available to the public. Nowhere in this entire tape is any statement even remotely similar to this made. At the January 21st meeting, during Commissioner commentary, you said the exact words you deny saying. This is on tape on the YouTube Clacko TV channel. You also emailed the exact same words as part of the letter you had Gary Schmidt send to all county employees on January 21st. Will you publicly retract your error today? Commissioner Scholl, at the May 4th meeting, you stated to Commissioner Fisher, I admitted to some, a couple of the things that your associate had on that website. I did not admit past my comments about Islam. I spoke two weeks ago about the falsity of your associate claim. I have yet to hear you publicly retract that. Will you do so today? Mr. Scholl, will you please indicate exactly which of the 115 Facebook posts that we have documented on recallmarkscholl.com you did not make? Are you truly stating that these posts, many of which are still posted on your own Facebook page, many of which were captured by media outlets before they were taken down, were not made by you? Will you be honest and admit today that you made every one of those posts? While we are on your Facebook page, a user named William Tell posted a fake vaccine card image for people to download under your meme on coronavirus and the gas shortage. Will you commit today to deleting such harmful and illegal content from your page? While both you and I are entitled to debate our opinions, you are not entitled to change the facts. I stand by all the material posted on recallmarkscholl.com. If you can document anything that is factually incorrect, I will change it. I stand by my work and my words. Will you do the same? Thank you.
Up next?
Up next, we have Bill Ware. Bill, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Well, thank you. Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners, Bill Ware, Damascus. I would like to comment on the consent agenda line item F1 today that includes the contract for $300,000 for justice research. I think this should have been individually discussed by the Commissioners with public input. Instead, it is buried in a number of other line items. It went through your process without a number of questions that need to be answered for public understanding. First of all, it was awarded to the same group that did the scan that concluded the need for this contract. It looks like that group produced a work guarantee for three years for itself for money from county taxpayers. It's like when buying a home and having a home inspection for repairs to be done. The mortgage company, if the home is to be financed, would require the work to be done by another company. And why three years? Another thing is awarding it to a Portland group. Why are we transferring taxpayer money desperately needed out of Clackamas County? Another thing is this group has interfered politically with Clackamas County. The majority of their members, 14 of them, are on written record demanding Commissioner Scholl's resignation. Now they want the county's money. This contract may very well be of value, be cost efficient, and be Clackamas County-focused, but we don't know. This commission needs to be more open and transparent in its process of contract granting. Another thing I wanted to mention is about the COVID vaccines. Michigan law requires that a recipient, recipient of a COVID-19 vaccine shall be provided with information or informed if and in what manner the development of the vaccine utilized aborted fetal tissue or other human embryonic stem cell derivation lines. The three current COVID vaccines currently in use involve aborted fetal tissue or human embryonic stem cell lines. Johnson &amp; Johnson fetal stem cell cultures were used to produce and manufacture the vaccine and final formation of the vaccine. Fitzher abortion-related stem lines were used, and Moderna aborted fetal cell lines were used in both the development and testing. I'd like to know if Clackamas County provides such information to its citizens to help those concerned with ethical and humane development of these vaccines. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Move on to the next. Uh, we have Yvonne Lazarus. Yvonne, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Am I unmuted?
You're, we hear you.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. I live in Oak Grove or Milwaukee. I'm right on the border. You know, I'm very disheartened. I wasn't going to speak, but I am very disheartened about everything that I see going on, and it seems to continue. And our Commissioners are bogged down with past injustice. That's what I want to say. And on top of that, two of them have been threatened. Don't forget that, Clackamas County, you people who are listening out here and the ones who have been complaining so much. Two of them have had their lives threatened. It's very, very sad. All of this needs to stop. My personal opinion is we, the community, need to get together and remove some of the people. I don't know how to say this, but they, it's infiltrated. The working condition up there is horrible. Sit in the room with them. Some of you come up there and just sit in the room with them. And I am for the two people thereafter. There's an, I, I'm transparent. You can see everything that I do. It's a shame that they have sneaked into committees and councils that we shouldn't even be paying for, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you, and I hope everybody has a good day.
Thank you, Yvonne. Want to move on to our last speaker? That's going to be Christine Kennedy. Christine, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes. Christine, I see you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Are you there?
Okay, how about now?
Oh, yep, we can hear you now.
All right. Occasionally, my microphone to turn, decides to turn off. All right. So Chair Smith, Commissioners, Administrator Schmidt, my name is Christine Kennedy. I live in Lake Oswego and have lived in Clackamas County for seven years. I'm a retired RN and I'm also a volunteer vaccinator. And it's really positive, uh, to see the vaccination rate for Clackamas County moving up. Uh, I had hoped for a little bit more of an increase this week, but maybe we're just waiting for the data to come through. So, very exciting. Chair Smith, I am disappointed to see that you still have your outdated plan to reopen Clackamas County on your tudysmith.com website because the date is from May of 2020 and the plan does not even mention the vaccine masking, nor does it address any equity issues. So, um, just a request again to either update your plan or, uh, just take it off. Uh, over the past five months, I've observed you criticize speakers for sharing misinformation and data that does not meet, uh, your expectations. And actually, one of the prior speakers brought up an issue that, um, I was trying to see how true his statement was about fetal tissue, um, or how, what the context of that is. But, um, again, the potential for misinformation is a concern. Um, anyway, when Philip Joyner did his presentation on COVID vaccination rates today, you asked a question about why are the vaccination rates low in our more rural areas? Um, I'm sure you've done a lot of reading to try to see why people are vaccine hesitant. And it's great that you're working with your healthcare team to address and create more convenience for vaccination. I think that's really important. Um, I, I do think, however, Chair Smith, that, that you're, you're very trusted and supported by our rural areas who have lower vaccination rates. And it affects the whole county. So I just really believe that your full-throated endorsement and your stated plan to get a vaccination could really make a big difference. Um, and I think it would be really interesting, uh, to see you do that and then watch how the metrics change. Um, I also think it would be a really good idea to ask Dr. President if she's available to come to next week's, one of next week's public meetings because I really am worried about all the misinformation that's out there. Uh, we're at a critical juncture and I think we can do this. We can open up safely. We can get the kids back to school. Let's just make it happen. And Chair Smith, we need you to step up and really encourage those rural counties to get vaccinated. Thank you very much.
Next caller? That is the end of my line. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting and we will move on. Gary, would you introduce the next item?
Yes, Chair Smith. Next is County Administrator Update. That is me. First, Commissioners, a little bit of housekeeping for you. On May 6th, at your business meeting, you approved the Community Development Division 2020, 2021 Action Plan that included a grant from the, from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, a community development block grant for $2,253,017. After your business meeting, we received notice from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development that they made an error and the grant amount actually should have been 1.5% higher, an additional $33,201 added to the grant coming to Clackamas County for a new total of $2,286,218. Because we need your approval of this, and this happened after your May 6 business meeting, I'm asking if you agree, could you simply give authority today to accept this additional $33,000? It's money coming to us so we can formalize the documents. If you prefer another way of approving this, we can do that. But because of the timeliness and that you're not meeting for two weeks, I'm hoping you'll indulge and ask for approval today.
I'll accept the motion to ratify.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved to ratify this motion and Commissioner Schrader has seconded. Any further discussion? Christina, please call the poll.
Hey, Commissioner Schrader? Aye. Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Uh, some good news I'd like to share. Today, Clackamas Water Environment Services, or Wes, and a Oregon nonprofit, Solve, kickoff, kicked off the annual summer waterway cleanup series at the Three Creeks National Natural Area in Milwaukee. This is a fourth consecutive year that Wes and Solve have teamed up for this series. Last year, the partnership resulted in the removal of more than 10,000 pounds of trash from the Three Creeks National Natural Area. Thank you to Wes and Solve and our many volunteers that support this annual effort. Uh, next, our Health, Housing, and Human Services Department have announced the winners of this year's Super Heart Heroes Awards, which honors local businesses, residents, and organizations for promoting hope, safety, and recovery in Clackamas County. There were 13 recipients across six categories, but I want to mention two today. First, the Casadero Steakhouse in Estacada has received the Super Heart Disaster Relief Hero Award for providing food and beverages to first responders and others during the wildfires last fall. They also opened their parking lot for first responders and to the American Red Cross. Uh, next, the Oregon City High School Student Mental Health Committee has received the Super Heart Ambassador Award. The committee is made up of students at the high school who worked to promote mental health awareness and support their peers at the high school. This included lessons to students, parents, and school staff. The group also started a buddy program to create weekly space for students who are in need of extra support. All the awards are on our county website, and thank you to these two examples for their fantastic service in our community. Commissioners, item of business, as you know, next week, our Budget Committee meetings all week long, May 24th through May 28th. There will be no business meeting next Thursday, May 27th. So your next business meeting will be two weeks from today on Thursday, June 3rd. Those are my updates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. We will now enter the Commissioner Communication portion of this meeting. Up first is Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Smith. It, um, seems like so much happens every business meeting with everything that we're working on. It is such an incredibly dynamic time from our board discussion items to our, um, public hearings, to our consent agendas, and then of course, the public comment and our Commissioner comments. So Tuesday was Election Day, and I don't know if the rest of you, uh, did some reminiscing about what it was like last year at this time, but if you're like me, you may have recalled popping in and out of different Zoom meetings on election night and following the election results on the internet. And it was somewhat of a surreal... the election results on the internet, and it was somewhat of a surreal, surreal evening as we were just dealing with the beginnings of COVID. And I recall that Chair Smith was elected, and I was happy that I had her cell phone so I could reach out with a congratulations last May. That was a year ago, Chair Smith. It's like, wow, a lot can happen in a year.
Right.
So much. We also had the homeless services measure that was passed, and since I was involved with the inception of that, all the way from the beginning, sort of theoretical concepts in a trip to Los Angeles, all the way through supporting, making sure Clackamas County had a fair seat at the table when it came to our representation on the Oversight Committee, and just sort of fighting for us as that became an actual measure that was referred to the voters. It's been, so much has happened in this last year. So one thing that people don't know, that I am just going to share, is that our county clerk, Sherri Hall, really does an amazing job with our election process and communicating with elected officials. I'm sure the rest of you got texts and emails, like, when are the numbers coming? What's happening? When will we know? There are so many special district races that happened on Tuesday, and some of them are very, very close and have not been called yet, that I just have to say, congratulations to every single person that not only ran on the ballot, but there were some write-in campaigns as well that were very engaging. And I say, this is democracy. This is what is at the heart and foundation of our country, and I applaud everyone for their civic engagement. So just a little bit of report, as Sherri Hall, our county clerk, does communicate well with us, she did let me know that there are 1,700 ballots that have to be verified because they have information just written on them. So that pulls them out of the normal scanning process, and they have to be verified differently. And there is also a stack of ballots that have yet to be counted, and she didn't know the exact number. And I'm just like, really? Clerk Hall, you don't know everything at this moment, but of course, we will grant her that grace and be patient with the results. And just a thanks to all those out there that participate, participate in this election, and for those who prevailed, and for those who stepped up. That means a lot.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Schrader, you're up next.
Yeah, I have a little bit, quite a few things today, so I'll try and go as fast as I can. Building on what Commissioner Fisher says, I have a friend who works at the clerk's office for the special elections, and it's amazing to see what a well-run, transparent process that is. We have nothing to worry about in Clackamas County in terms of how our votes are counted and making sure that everything is verified. And a lot of this is done by retired folks who are volunteers. Okay? Well, no, they get, they get a small paycheck.
They do.
They do get a small paycheck, but they really do it because it's not a lot of money. So they're not really doing it for the money. They do it because they believe in our process and how important elections are for us. So, kudos to Sherri, and thank you for mentioning that, Commissioner Fisher. I want to mention a few things. I did a video on Monday dealing with children of incarcerated parents where I talked about Debbie Marston, who is a close, dear friend, who really kind of corralled me when I was a new commissioner and said, you got to get involved in this program. And I also want to give a shout out to Rod Cook, who's in the audience today. He's our interim director of H3S, and Rod was really responsible for helping to get that off the ground and implementing that program. So thank you, Rod, for that. I'll never forget it. I was a new commissioner. I was a Green, you know, nobody ever said no to Debbie Marston, okay? And so you were really helpful to get that program started. It is still going strong today, and it's one of the many programs, I think it's so necessary for children whose parents are incarcerated, to really try and get rid of that stigma, because that's hard on kids, and also to keep that connection up between the person that's incarcerated, mom or dad, with, with the child. So, thanks for that. I want to give, I want to thank my Commissioners, all my colleagues today, because you all signed a letter supporting the Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition. And basically, this is a designation for the 56 river miles in the proposed Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area. It has to go through Congress. Hopefully, hopefully that will happen sooner than later, but this is a great group. They're working hard to make that happen, and thank you all for signing that letter. I'd like to give a shout out to North Clackamas Parks and Rep. because on Saturday, at two of our parks, they had pollination kits that they were giving out to folks. And I'm, of course, you know, I'm a big proponent of pollination, and I was really happy to see that our Parks District took that to heart, and, you know, kind of, yeah, kind of made me feel good that, in a small way, I made, hopefully made a little bit of difference. I also want to thank DJ Ruger. He, he helped pull together with our local VFW here in Oregon City, a memorial of, for a park for Tyrone Woods, and I know that Commissioner Savis and Commissioner Shoal were there, so I'm hopeful they'll, I didn't make it because I had just too much other stuff going on that day, but I do know you were there, and thank you for going, and I hope you mention it. But DJ is a great guy. I just love that guy, and he's a real mover and shaker in the VFW. So generally, anything DJ, you know, asks for, I try and help him out. We all try to help him out any way we ha, we can. What else? Oh, what I'm going to be doing this afternoon is I will be attending a National Association of County membership meeting. Well, they'll be reviewing with us, who are members of various committees, is NACO, what, what's coming down the, you know, the pipeline from the federal government, and give us an update on the monies and other things that are going to affect our counties. Another reason why I'm a big fan of the National Association, they really do, they're a great organization, they have great influence in Congress to help us get what we need as counties across this nation, and it's a very, very valuable resource for us. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Shoal, you're up.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Last Saturday, I had the pleasure of attending the dedication of the Tyrone S. Woods Memorial Park in Oregon City. It's a beautiful park, very well done by Oregon City. It commemorates the memory of Tyrone S. Woods, U.S. Navy SEAL, who gave his life in protecting U.S. assets and, and the embassy in Benghazi. I encourage people to go by there, see it. It's got a big climbing structure, it's got a dog park, it's got restrooms, it's a very nice facility. Thank you, Oregon City. As we begin the Budget Committee schedule next week to decide on the 2021, 2022 annual budget, I am reminded by constituents that each dollar spent comes from the labor and taxes of a citizen, and that we must ensure the needs of our county are met while being respectful of every dollar, just as the taxpayers are frugal in their household and business expenditures. Clackamas County must be government of the people, by the people, and for the people, and the budget must reflect that. I'm sure it will. I'd like to put in a plug in for Amy Jo Cook from Clackamas Fire District Number One. She's a community paramedic. She does health outreach. She's provided by the fire district to the county at large. I did a ride along with her a few days ago, and she is a real treasure to the county, in my opinion, and the county needs to make sure that we do what we can to support her outreach. I've also been visiting many nonprofits who deal with, with homeless and the hungry, and I'll report more on that in the next week or so. And finally, I'd like to thank everybody who testified today. Whether I agree with you or whether I do not, I support your First Amendment rights, and thank you very much for your time today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoal. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Thank you. I, I, with constructive intent here today, I just want to, you know, I'm going to take the role position here today of just politely reminding everyone, colleagues, staff, public who are listening still, that, you know, we, the Board of County Commissioners, in March of 2021, approved the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Working Agreements. And really, it's really about the goal to increase our ability and positively impact our community by leveraging strong and effective, respectful communication, and honoring each member, board member's perspective, time, and value, and, and create a, a strong team to tackle any challenge presented to a day, presented to us on a daily basis. Lots to read here, but I'm just going to cite things that, on occasion, you know, that want to remind everyone what's in here. And I'm drawn to one of the latter ones at the bottom of the page where it says, correct misinformation. And I think I've, that one touches me because, you know, when I hear people have a misunderstanding, you know, I assume the positive intent, but it's possible people are misinformed. And I think it's somewhat responsible for us, especially us as elected leaders, that when we speak, we speak with accuracy because people listen to us. And I presume that when Commissioner Schrader says something, that, that, you know, it, you know, people will assume it's accurate, that it's the board's position, that, you know, not necessarily, but I think people make that presumption. So it's incumbent upon all of us to be mindful that what we say reflects on all of us and, and on the county, most especially, and on the citizens of the county. So, I'm sorry, Commissioner Schrader, for using as an example. You didn't say any, or do anything wrong, so I just want to just, you know, you and I are friends, so I know I can, you and I can communicate and know that we, we don't hold any animosity or anything. So, with all that said, you know, communicating with respect and efficiency, waiting to be recognized, allowing others to express their perspective, just a few here, I just want to, wanted to just cite, you know, assume individual accountability for attendance, for preparation of meetings, our roles. But, you know, the information that we have presented to us is, I, I, I'm sure that's, some of it is about interpretation, and some of it about, is about studying the material. And, you know, I, I think, again, we do have to read a lot. I spent a lot of yesterday reading through packets of material and information with, to prepare for this morning's J-PAC meeting, Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, and a lot of stuff in there. And, you know, I always wonder how many, how many of my colleagues at the J-PAC table or any of these committee meetings I go to read the material, and sometimes I can't get to all of it, so I don't feel sometimes comfortable that I've actually gone through all the material and the detail that I feel comfortable with. But, you know, in, in, in our conversations when it comes to transportation and the ones that are really, really difficult, and I think the one around tolling has been a very difficult discussion, and I know that we have cited that the legislature made a decision in HB 2017 to toll I-205 and Interstate 5 initially, or to study it for tolling. But I want to just clarify one thing that's really important for, for those that are listening and those who have responded to me in the last week or so. The legislature did not say toll all of lanes. The legislature didn't say to toll local streets. The local, the, the legislature said to study tolling and consider tolling for funding of these projects. What's happened is, out of HB 3065, is, and, and going forward, is now we've expanded the projects beyond the, the projects cited in HB 2017. So we've opened the door a little bit, it's banging open, what's it saying? Give an inch, take a mile. And I'm, I'm afraid that the cost, frankly, of, of funding other projects beyond the scope of HB 2017 was not the intent. So, I just want to just state, you know, state that, that that's a, that's going to be a growing concern. I don't know, we don't know what the financial impact's going to be, what the cost of tolling is, but it's a diversion that got us started, I mentioned that last week. Diversion was the reason that we got involved in this, and to substitute that with 24-hour tolling, seven days a week, is antithetical to the purpose of avoiding diversion in the first place. So at that point, at, at, with that topic, I, I'm, I'm just struggling with the fact that how the board, not the board, but the legislature's moving forward. So that concludes my comments for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. Gary, when you mentioned the Casodaro Inn got a Super Volunteer Award following the firefights, Commissioner Schrader and I, the second week after the fires, visited City of Estacada and saw that process in motion. He was quite generous, and then he opened up his restaurant and just cooked for free for any of the volunteers or anybody who was displaced to come by and get food. It was just, it was just a remarkable, remarkable effort. Yes, and he, we should be remembering those people. Commissioners, I want to talk today about liaison appointments that each of us have as we go out and engage in the topics that we like to learn about, that we like to have maybe influence in, maybe learn about, and that's with our staff, it's with our departments, it's with our boards, our commissions, and any other people that we may touch. I looked up the definition of liaison, and it is, "A person who helps organizations or groups to work together and to provide communication and information and cooperation to each other." And some time ago, when I made liaison appointments, and by the way, you all volunteered for those too, and we worked on this together, it was with the spirit of service in mind. And then with that, most of us have been able to report back to this Board of Commissioners on what we find out and what we learn. And I think, for the most part, we have been pretty good in that. I've tried to let you know what's happening at my meetings that I have, that the chair is assigned to. I have several tomorrow and to, later on today that I can report back to you on. But I would like to caution us that in no way are the liaison positions designed to ever give authorization to direct or to instruct or to compel any staff member, board member, volunteers to a particular action. That is not the design of a liaison commissioner/board assignment. Because those duties, as you know, Commissioners, are lawfully set by the BCC during either our issues meetings, our policy sessions, public hearings, and weekly business meetings. So I would consider it wholly inappropriate for myself, for instance, to walk over to any department and say, you know, I'm the chair, I think you should do this and this and this, without first authorization through my board. In fact, if our board did vote for it, there would be no need for me to compel, direct, or instruct any staff member to do that. So I want to caution us, we have a lot, a lot of topics coming up. We have some very important business meetings, excuse me, budget meetings this week. We are also, now have $40 million in the bank, from what I understand. I would caution us not to make promises to anybody. What I have done, I have said, interesting, thank you for your ask, I will add it to the list, it's being vetted through a committee, and then the Board of County Commissions will decide on a whole what to do. So please keep that in mind. Do, please do not instruct, compel, or direct any person because you are either a liaison or a subject matter expert in any field. With that in mind, this commission has been adjourned.